I hereby call the fifth day of the fifth regular session to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer. Chief Clerk, call the roll.
Senator Alek, Senator Aritz, Senator Viguerre, Senator Kohlendt, Floor Leader Harper, Senator Conman, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo,
Aye.
Senator Perman, Senator Romolo, Senator Orusmal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina, Acting Speaker Moses.
Here.
Mr. Speaker, we have eight members present.
With that, we have a quorum. If no objection, I would like to designate Chairman Orusmal as the acting floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I, with that appointment, I move to dispense with the reading of the journal.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispense with the reading of the journal. Any discussion? If none, we shall vote. All those in favor of Congress dispensing with the reading of the journal, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now dispensed with the reading of the journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, item five, presidential communications, there are none.
Continue.
Item six, FSN Supreme Court communications, none also. Item seven, member communications, none. Item eight, departmental communications, there are none. Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications, none, Mr. Speaker. Item ten, state communications, none also. Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications, none. Item twelve, municipal or town communications, none. Item thirteen, foreign government communications, there are none, Mr. Speaker.
Order of the day. Item fourteen.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, item fourteen, standing committee reports. We have several reports. The first one is standing committee report number 20-78 on presidential communication number 20-211 on the fiscal year 2019 budget from your committee on J and G for adoption.
Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Move for adoption on this aid report.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-78. Discussion? Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think, Speaker, the report is pretty much self-explanatory. There are, during hearings, some of the hearing, the budget hearing in May, I was unable to attend the session and I thanked my good vice chairman to take up the budget hearing. So, in any course, I would also refer to ask if he could also help in discussion on the budget. But as we finalize the budget, there are some slightly increase and these are to some contracts and fringe benefits. Also, on some increase in fixed assets are to the opening of new offices and replacement of fixed assets. So, again, the increases are not that tremendous, but are justifiable and the committee feel that it is justified to be, to budget as requested. And I would ask my good vice chairman if any question that he feels that it's also need to be raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. Vice Chairman, you care to add?
Thank you, Speaker, not at this time. Everything is okay.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. We're still on discussion? Any more discussion?
Question.
It's been moved and seconded that we close debate on said standing committee report. We will vote. All those in favor of adoption of standing committee report number 20-78, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We have now adopted standing committee report number 20-78. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have a standing committee report number 20-79 on functional resolution number 20-122 from your committee on health and social affairs for adoption.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and all that are observing our session this morning. Mr. Speakers, make a motion to adopt SCR number 20-79.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-79. Chairman Perman, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This standing committee report is based on a nominee, Mr. Halbert Falcom, to be representing on our, at the national level, on our social security board. We had hearing with this individual. We had his bio data. I think, I believe that everybody read that already. He's known to the national government because he was more than, his last job was the Bombay postmaster for minimum of 10 years. Mr. Falcom has served a lot of agencies too. So, he's more than qualified to be one of the board members and that's about it. If other members want to input, please do. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. We're still on discussion? Any more discussion on the said report?
Question.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-79. We shall vote. All those in favor of the said report, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 20-79. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker, we have standing committee report number 20-80 on presidential communication number 20-211 on the fiscal year 2019 budget from your committee on TNC for adoption.
Chairman Golen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Move to adopt 20-80 on the said report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-80. Discussion? Chairman Golen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Speaker. The budget is merely mandated and recommended from the, your committee that we stick to the FY '18, the current fiscal year. The, it's kind of merely slight increase of the operation is about 10,000. Maybe this is how I can say it.
We're still on discussion of the said report? Any more discussion? Question has been called for. If there's no objection, we shall vote on the said report. All those in favor of adoption of standing committee report number 20-80, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now adopted standing committee report number 20-80. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Four more reports, Mr. Speaker. We have an awaiting list number 20-39.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Speaker, thank you. Good morning to you and members and all of those who are observing from the color. Mr. Speaker, I wish to make a motion to withdraw from the waiting list the RND committee report number 20-81 be placed on the committee, standing committee report for action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress withdraw and place standing committee report number 20-81. Acting floor leader, do we have any rules to suspend?
It's okay. Rules and laws are meant to be broken and discarded. Some move, Mr. Speaker, that the relevant rules, especially the 24-hour, 24-hour awaiting period, be suspended.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress suspend rules that may impede our action on said motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. The rules are now suspended. We are now on the motion to withdraw and place standing committee report number 20-81. Any objection? If none, we shall vote on the placement of the said report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We now have standing committee report number 20-81.
Speaker.
Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Yes, Speaker, I saw move for the adoption of standing committee report number 20-81.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress adopt standing committee report number 20-81. Discussion? Chairman Panuelo, you have the floor.
Speaker, thank you. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words on the report. I first want to thank our members of the RND committee. We've had executive and reviewed the report in detail. The report is pretty detailed. I'll just do some highlights on it and, Speaker, on your committee's review of the RND committee department. When you see changes on staffing or positions, it's just a reshoveling. There's no increase of staff in Department of RND. Just highlight that I want to share with members is that current year, we did not fund the tourism development projects. FY '19, we've added that under the CIP grants and subsidies. And on NORMA, the budget is also pretty much the same. They carry the employees who were moved from contractual to public services reflected in here. And on the two banking commission and insurance commission offices, banking commission has remained the same. With the insurance commission office, there is an increase of under contractual of 375,000. I think members know that this is for the position of the captive insurance expert. And the board is reviewing the contract. This individual expert should be on board very soon. So, that's what I want to highlight, Speaker. Other members can add more details to it. The report is pretty detailed, so I will leave it there. If there's any questions, I'll do my best to clarify further. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuelo. We're still on discussion. Chairman Orusmal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I was trying to listen as carefully as I could to the summary of the report by the good chairman of that committee. However, in his summary, he indicated the increase as pertaining to tourism development. But when I look at the budget and I really should congratulate the committee for having this summary on page three of the report in the opening pages of the report highlighting the total department budget and I would, I would request that the other staff do a report of the other committees next time around, if we're still here, do the same. But when I look at the summary report, unless my eyes are failing me, total positions, employees in 2018 is 37. And when I look at 19 proposed, 19 recommend and recommend, I see 56. That's about 37 to 56, 19 positions. So, my question is, are the 56 is a mistake? And should we down to 37? Or if it is the correct figure, what are the new positions, the 19 positions that have been added to the department? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, acting floor leader. Chairman Panuelo, you care to?
Recede, Speaker.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Panuelo, you still have the floor.
Yeah, Speaker, I know we had this during the committee hearings and I know for NORMA, I remember that they were converted from contractual to public service. But for the Department of RND, I did verify this this morning when we're reviewing the trap, myself and the attorney. We recall that 19 positions were transferred from budget office to be included in the RND under statistics. But that's where the number has increased. So, it's not new positions per se, but because of the restructuring or the reshoveling, RND inherited 19 positions from budget, which have become the statistics division. This is the information that I was provided. And to, while I'm, I have the floor. One of the increases that I failed to mention in the, in the report is the budget for the next enumeration, comprehensive enumeration of our population. Current fiscal year is the amount, you can see, it's increased by 1.5 million because this is a very comprehensive undertaking that divisional statistics have started to, to, it's been over 10 years. So, we're doing another enumeration of our population. I hope that satisfies the chairman of E on the issue of number of positions that is listed here. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman, acting floor leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and I thank the good chairman for the explanation. I guess with the statistics now in RND, it is at the tail end of the process that started, I thought was at the initial stage of the current administration. I know people and offices were thrown all over the place and I'm glad that finally these statistics have landed where it is currently. One small question with regard to the statement made by the good chairman relating to the summary of the report on tourism development. I just wondered, I know when I was in that committee, we had put in some money for tourism development. May I, since the report is not giving us the time to review if there is money for tourism development and how much and how was it divided up?
Thank you, Chairman Orusmal. Chairman Panuelo?
Yeah, Speaker, I will gladly answer during review of this particular item. We understand when we, the current fiscal year, when we started, because how we gave the, lend the money to the executive of 11 or 12 million, we all agreed not to fund some of the line items in our respective committees and this year, tourism development was not funded based on that compromise we met. So, it's increased a little more than what it was, what it is for the current fiscal year. The amount given to the states for tourism development that we are currently assisting with the states is a total of, I believe it's 2.5 million. And the way it's broken down, it's 750 for Chuk, 750 for Bombay and 500 each of the Yap and Kosai. This is the number that's here and this is to answer the chairman of these question on this issue. I think states are still trying to implement these projects. Some states are faster than others in utilizing this amount of money. Currently, Bombay is pitted out some tourist sites that are under review and I think soon contractors will be identified to begin implementation of these, including Sokes Ridge, for example, which has 600,000 project that would be implemented and other areas around Bombay. And I'm sure the other states are also doing the same. Thank you, Speaker.
Speaker, I again thank the good chairman for the explanation. Just one follow-up on that same issue. The share for Yap, for example, as he correctly stated, some states have run with their, the money appropriated for their tourism development. Others are still going in circle, trying to figure out what to use the money for. Can the money here appropriated, if signed into law, can that fund be used to improve, like the airport area, including that thing that goes around where you put your luggage and then it goes around instead of opening up in front of all people looking to see what kind of clothes you wear?
Thank you, Chairman. That's a good question.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, Chairman Orusmal. I don't think there's really strict, you know, strict way of not allowing that money to be used. It should be determined by each state. I believe, I believe that tourism office consults with the states and it's the state priorities that are used, I mean, highlighted and implemented by RND department. And each state can also designate, allow you to be their governors or whatnot. But to answer the question, I think it could. I know last time Kosai intended to renovate their airport with their share. The recommendation from, from RND was that if they can look at historic and sites that they can develop and use other sources because that renovation was very costly. It may use up the entire money. But the intention of the, the RND committee is to look at what can attract tourists coming to our, our nation and that is to develop our, the sites that are considered historic or attractive for locals and tourists as well. So, I think, Chairman Orusmal, it's not restricted, but the intention is we hope that Yap can also develop its historic and other sites that are attractive for tourists and for locals as well. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, acting floor leader.
Yeah, thank you, Speaker, and I thank the good chairman again for all the responses to my small questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Any more discussion? It's been moved and seconded that discussion be closed. All those in favor of, we shall vote on the motion to close debate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carried. We will now vote on the standing committee report number 20-81. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now passed standing committee report number 20-81. Next report, Chief Clerk.
Terrenan, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Item 13, special committee reports, none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Oh, I'm sorry, item 15. Item 16, assignment of measures and communications. We have a referral sheet number 20-82.
Chairman and members, please take note. Next item?
Item 17, unfinished business, there are none, Mr. Speaker.
Item number 18?
Item number 18, bill calendar. Mr. Speaker, we have CB number 20-151 for first reading. This bill was deferred from September 18 to today.
Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Romolo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Move to defer action on this aid bill to the next session of Congress.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer action on CB number 20-151 till the next session. All those in favor, if no discussion, we will vote on the deferment of CB number 20-151. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. Congress has now deferred action on CB number 20-151. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
Terrenan, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
We have item number 19, resolution calendar. We have functional resolution number 20-122 for adoption from your committee on health and social affairs.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Short recess.
Short recess. Congress is back in session. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Looking at all members, today, I don't think, it's kind of cloudy, so I'm gonna have to make a motion to defer action on this resolution to next week.
Make your motion.
Motion, so move.
Any second. It's been moved and seconded that CR number 20-122 be deferred. Any discussion? If none, we shall vote on the motion to defer CR number 20-122. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress has now deferred action on CR number 20-122. Next resolution?
Terrenan, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
Item 20, introduction of bills and resolution.
If you have any measures to introduce, please pass them forward. Next item?
Item 21, miscellaneous communications, there are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item?
22, item 22, miscellaneous business.
Any miscellaneous business? Chairman Orusmal?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I just wish to share something that I've enjoyed watching. And, but before I do that, I'd like to congratulate ICTV, is it? That's the correct name of the cable TV that provides?
Yes.
Programs here. I'd like to congratulate them, especially on providing local channel. I believe on my TV, it's channel 14. Especially for the, the programs that have been running and I watched several years ago, some years ago. And I, what I see now is seem to be an updated version of this historical, updated version of this historical dates and programs and establishment of the Congress of Micronesia, for example. And I thought it's very interesting, and I would encourage the other states to show those kind of documentary films, pictures. I look at people that have, that were included in the founding of this nation, and it makes you really appreciate what those people went through and to accomplish what they did. Many of them look very young when they started this government through the establishment of the Council of Micronesia, and then later on, in nineteen sixty-five, I believe, the Congress of Micronesia. It's very interesting, and I wish the other states would, you know, show these historical films, especially good for our students. And, you know, like Professor, former President Chan Yeats is included in it, the Speaker Petual Henry, and many of those people that founded this nation. So I express my congratulations to ICTV. On the other hand, as I indicated during the TNC Committee hearings, oversight hearings, I again expressed my disappointment with the services, especially for mobile telecommunications. I indicated to the CEO of Telecom, and I was surprised that he seemed not to be aware of this problem. Including, just before I walk into this chamber, I try calling our office in Yap. They couldn't understand what the hell I was talking about. So I asked if they can call me. They couldn't even call me. So there is need to improve on the telecommunications systems. Not to let the technology run away from us by having cable TV, I mean, fiber optic cables, and then the communication that many people can have access to is not working. So I again hope that Telecom would improve the cellular phone services in the FSM. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Acting Floor Leader, for the statement. Any more miscellaneous business? Chairman Golen, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This is in regards to our FY nineteen budget. I was just receiving some requests yesterday in regards to this budget. I know there is an urgent need for our national government, most especially the, our telecommunications service. The transmission yesterday is for the regulatory office. And some of the contractors that we were, not receive any information about it, they were requesting your committee to reconsider those. And I just hope that members of Congress, during our consolidation of our budget, if we can see that picture and try to accommodate the needs. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Golen. You are a member of the Ways and Means Committee, so I hope you show up to the consolidation. Probably the announcement will be made when we go down to the next item. Any more miscellaneous?
Speaker.
Chairman Romolo, you have the?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I thought I bring up this issue again. We had a hearing on this very issue, on the banning of the foreign Filipino workers in the FSM. We have thorough discussion and exchange with the witnesses and the progress, and we hear that the two departments with the executive are looking at ways to resolve this problem. But when I read the news, I hope this is not just selling points for the media. I always want to think that it's not true of what I read. But it also bothers me that while during the hearing, they said the executive are working toward to resolve this problem, but what read in the news that we might be looking at a possible executive order for a moratorium on the new hiring of the foreign Filipino workers in the FSM. So I kind of, it bothers me to see, to know that during the hearing, they said they're working on the resolution to resolve this issue, and at the same time, reading these news coming out by coding that coming from the executive, that will be, we might expect an executive order on this. So I thought I also bring up to our attention, in case we might have anything that to also help in influencing or to resolve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Romolo. These are the problems that arise when the issues are political and not legal. So your, your statement is well taken. Any more miscellaneous business? If none, Chief Clerk, next item.
Item twenty-three, Announcements.
Announcements. Chairman Wally?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcement from your committee on exam.
Thank you. Chairman Figueroa?
Thank you. Tomorrow, at one o'clock, your committee on Ways and Means will start reviewing the budget for FY nineteen. So it will be beginning of the budget, FY nineteen budget consolidation, tomorrow at one o'clock, and we'll decide whether it's going to be in the members' lounge or in the conference room. Thank you.
Members, take note. Thank you, Chairman Figueroa. Acting Chairman, Net?
Thank you, Speaker, and none at this time.
Chairman Perman?
Thank you, Speaker. We have a oversight hearing today with my care at two-thirty, and I'm excusing myself because it's, well, it's Chinese, and you all know why behind it. So Vice Speaker will be chairing the oversight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My vice chairman, for everybody's information, is either in Kusay or Philippines. Alec, Alec. Chairman Alec, Alec.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Chairman Romolo? Chairman Perman? Chairman Panualo, I mean. Any announcement?
Speaker, thank you. I, the RND Committee will be conducting an oversight. Date is not said yet, just for information purposes. The, it's a policy framework that's coming in for protected areas network for all the FSM. Should be an interesting issue. Witnesses will be called. So I'm just giving the information so that members can see the announcement on the screen. Thank you, Speaker.
Speaker.
Thank you.
Short recess.
Short recess. Chairman Golen, you have the floor, announcements.
Mr. Speaker, I have a lot of announcement, but now, short delivery.
Thank you, Chairman Golen. Vice Chairman Conman?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No announcements.
Chairman Rusmal, and then Acting Floor Leader Rusmal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. As I alluded to during the recess, your committee on Education is honoring the weekend by not having meeting. But on Monday at one-thirty, it will start, it will have its hearing on the, on the bill to authorize or give authority to the Department of Education to, to license or to do thing for the private schools. So that will be on Monday at one-thirty. Right after that, then we go into special education grants in the hearing room. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Chairman, members, take note. Now Acting Floor Leader Rusmal.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I move that this Congress stands in recess until Monday at ten o'clock in the morning.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stand in recess until Monday at ten o'clock. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Congress stands in recess until ten o'clock Monday morning.